Okay, it now being 5:30, I will call the Selectmen's May 6th meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for Cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first item on our agenda is a discussion vis-à-vis town meeting preparation with the Finance Committee. The moderator, Town Accountant, Town Clerk. Did you want to lead, Brian, or how do you want to work this?
I thought maybe we'll just go article by article.
Fine.
Starting with the annual, I guess.
Okay.
So the problem before us is to make sure these sort of say what they want to say and who's going to say them? Is that what we're aiming at?
Yes.
Okay.
I have put the department that presented it underneath each article so it would give us a clue on how good we should go with it.
Okay.
Who's leading?
Who wants to say?
So Article 1, do you want to determine?
Well, that's the moderator's article.
So you're all set with that?
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we're all set with that?
So the second one is from the Treasurer.
Well, actually, let's back up. Is there any reports that are going to need to be heard that didn't make it into the annual report?
Not that I know of.
In your tariff?
Not that I know of, unless somebody stands up at town meeting and says they want to report something.
Okay. Good enough.
Okay. So Article 2 will be Colleen Moore. Town Treasurer will make the motion. Let me run down these since a lot of them are Selectmen's.
So Article 3?
Article 3, will that be Alan Wealock?
Yes.
Okay.
So Article 5 will be Colleen Moore in the end?
Yep.
Five was who? Colleen?
Article 4.
Yeah.
You want to do Article 6, Mike? Where it's the Police Department?
That's the fibroaftic one.
Right. Yeah, sure.
That's the one where the outside person's going to be presenting?
Correct. So I'll get you her complete name and her information ahead of time.
Yep.
But it's somebody from Open Cape.
Is there anyone who's going to talk about her from the town's perspective or is it really just turned over to her or him?
I think it makes more sense if we turn it over to her. It's something that Chief Dillon and I have been working on together for a while and although we would be, we wouldn't be unprepared to speak on it, but I think from a technical perspective, it makes a lot more sense to just hear directly from her.
We may have Chief Dillon if he wants to speak.
That would add some sort of gravitas to it, I think. That makes sense.
Liz, you can speak to it too?
I can chat with him a little bit about that. Maybe we could give a brief overview and then turn it over to her for the more substantial technical part of the discussion.
So Mike is going to make the motion?
Yes. And then you'll speak first, is that it?
Sure, I'll coordinate with Pat on that and we'll come up with a little something.
You want to do Article 7 to Mike? This is the annual lease payment on a patrol vehicle again, the police.
Sure.
I can do 8.
And will the Highway Supervisor speak to this?
Yes. I'll make the motion and then he can speak to it.
What's his name?
Scott.
Scott Ripley.
Do the same with Article 9.
Yes.
Is he a town resident?
No, he's not.
All right, so he'd be on that list.
Same with 10. Mr. Russell, you're on that.
I am? I can do that sentence, I think.
11, 12, and 13?
Yeah. Right, 11, 12, and 13. And the first one is probably the annual one. I'll speak to that one.
Okay.
And then I presume, I don't know which of the fellows from the Dennis School Committee will speak to the...
Let me reach out to John then?
It'd either be John or Jason. And then the next one, the open space thing, is either going to be Linda Letty or one of the co-chairs of the open space, which would either be Linda Letty or Vicki.
Vicki, you said?
Vicki. Malone, Vicki Malone.
Is that on Article 13?
Yes.
14, I assume is for Ellen again? Ethan Stiles?
Who's that?
Ethan Stiles.
And I will make sure that every department has a copy of what we have here so that all they have to do is read it.
That sounds good.
Great.
Makes it easier.
Yeah, it does.
17 is the Planning Board, but it will be Alan Wealock and potentially Ann Soboluski presenting that.
So they'll have to make a report first, right?
They'll do a little presence. Well, first the Planning Board has to give their report from a public hearing.
Right.
And it would be them also making the motion.
Okay.
But Alan will be doing the presentation.
Okay. That's 17 we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
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 And the 18 will be the same, report from Planning Board, motion by Planning Board. I'm assuming that will be Deb. And then Alan Wealock will be presenting that one as well with some people from Bylaw Review Committee.
He's going to be doing the overhead presentation, isn't he?
Alan is, yes. 19 also needs the Planning Board report and they would be doing the motion. Alan wasn't certain for this one if it would be him or Ann Soboluski explaining this one, but one of them from Bylaw Review Committee.
Same with 20 and 21?
20 and 21 are all Planning Boards, so they'll be giving a report and presenting or addressing any questions.
We see that's Deb making the motion?
Deb making the motion.
Right down to 25, you said?
I'm sorry?
Down to Article 25?
22.
No, it's just 20 and 21.
Sorry about that.
Mike doesn't drop for another hour, you're good.
Go beat.
22, I believe that Rick Burnett or Linda Letty will be speaking too, but we do need the Planning Board report for that one as well. And they would be making the motion. So still Deb making the motions. And then 23, this one may get passed over if 22 passes.
Right. So who do you anticipate would be making that suggestion that comes to fruition?
I would imagine Linda Letty or Deb, since it was technically a Planning Board article, but Linda was the proponent with Conservation Commission on that, so...
Does the Planning Board still have to give their report before you...
Technically, they should, I think, just to make sure that we've satisfied 40A requirements.
Yeah, okay.
And then after that, I think to say that we're passing over it is fine.
Okay.
24, is that Paul?
So Planning Board voted to pass over.
Yeah, so they will pass.
They'll pass over this one?
Yes.
So we're going to do a report?
Or the Planning Board recommended that it be passed over.
Correct, so they'll have to give that report.
Right.
And then they'll make a motion to pass over?
Yeah.
Okay.
The same thing with passing over.
So a report?
So Deb will have to give the Planning Board report with that recommendation and then the motion.
So Article 27, 6 says Committee and Building Commissioner. What's Committee?
Oh, that's Bylaw Review Committee. That one's not a zoning article, so there will be no Planning Board report for 26.
So who's, Tom can't make it, so is Alan going to?
If Tom won't be there, then Alan said he would take the reins on that.
Make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Alan, Alan Wealock.
Who's Tom?
Tom Milias is the Building Commissioner, but John just said he's unable to come to town meetings, so...
Well, he can't make the motion anyways because he's...
Right, not a resident, so...
Basically Alan's meeting from what I can see.
Yeah. Who might as well have him just keep standing? So 27, Steve can make the motion, he's a resident.
Now Alan makes sure he has copies of the next couple that he can read just as they're on the screen.
Great, thanks, Bob. So that'll take us down 27, 8, and 9.
I guess I probably should do 30 on someone on that committee. And then I guess either I'll speak to it or Karen Foy would speak to it on 30.
Yeah. Or is it Jason?
Probably Jason. It's gotta be Jason, yeah.
Okay. Jason on Article 31? Alan, I guess on...
Alan, Bylaw Review Committee is actually not going to be taking over the bylaw codification project, so that's really somewhat in limbo. We have a conference call scheduled with the code company later this week to kind of figure out next steps. It's our inclination that the whole project should really be put on the shelf for a period of time until the bylaws are a bit more kind of ready for prime time.
We contractually committed to pay the $2,000?
That's what we need to find out about, what we're committed to and also if it makes sense to do some portion of this work now, if we've already paid for some. So that's the purpose of the conference call this week, is to kind of get a handle on where things are at with this and then find out if there's any risk to us if we want to put it on the shelf and postpone it temporarily.
I got a feeling we may have to pay because this was part of a grant.
Right, so we may be under contract.
But we'll get back to you, Brian, and let you know who's going to make the...
Okay.
What are we doing here?
So should she make the motion?
No, she's Halifax.
I don't think she's a town, but I think she lives in Halifax.
I feel a little uncomfortable making it since we voted against.
I don't think that would make a lot of sense.
No.
No.
So who wants to be the person?
A lot of volunteers on this one.
I'm not listening either. I'm sorry.
I mean, someone from the floor can just shout it.
Unless, unless she wanted to consider passing over it, just...
I'll check with Joy. If we can, if she doesn't want to pass it over, then maybe we can get somebody from the Council on Aging Board that will make the motion and then we can talk about it. So I'll get back to you on this one?
Yep.
Good.
Just for point of accuracy, there's a typo in the last line that should read "ban upon trading or sale."
Yeah. Well, this is just the, is it in the actual?
No, there's no typo in the warrant.
Yeah, that looks good here.
Oh, okay, so the warrant's okay.
It should have been a typo.
Yeah, no, that's fine, Bob.
Yeah, this was just to help with the discussion.
So if this does continue for discussion?
Yes.
The person who'd be presenting it or most interested is a Plimpton citizen or is not?
No, it would be the director who is from Halifax, Joey Marble.
All right, so that's another one to add to my list. She may want to speak to it.
Yes, absolutely. She should be on the list.
Last name Marble, like the rock?
Yes.
Yeah. Obviously, they'll speak to it too because we're not recommending it.
Town Council has...
Sort of not speaking to it, speaking against it, I guess.
Town Council has all of these, this draft, but has not finished reviewing yet. So things may change a little bit and if they do, I'll get it over to you and obviously we'll get it to Barbara so she can distribute the copies and everything like she customarily does.
So we owe you an answer on 32 and 33. Okay.
We should give Christine Joy plenty of chances to make motions.
You know, I talked over her last meeting, so I'm going to shut my mouth and let her make all the seconds.
Do we need to talk about the special?
Yeah.
Okay.
So please, you want to do that one, Mike?
Sure.
I would say all the ones that say Board of Selectmen, we should have Christine do just so she gets some speaking time. Unless she doesn't want to. If she doesn't want to, then I'll do one. But I think she would.
Should we throw in a couple from you just for variety?
No.
Will the chief do number 6?
Yes, he should.
And 7? 6, 7, and 8.
You'll have to sit with him, Barbara, and just make sure he's...
So prior to that, there's no real outside people to speak to on the...
No, not really. These are all more or less being transferred from, you know, one budget account to another.
Okay.
Unless somebody has a question from the floor.
Right.
I'll do number 9. I'm the proponent of that, so... Steve again on...
Steve and then John Wellington.
Okay. I guess the question of how long a meeting is going to be is really hinges on zoning.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the rest of it is pretty baked, I would think.
Yeah, I would agree. I'd like to get it over with in one night if we can.
Absolutely. You've been good at that, you've got a track record to keep up. Especially now that you're moving on.
Exactly, yeah. Keep my reputation intact.
Do we have any logistics we need to deal with?
Any what?
Logistics, sound system, audio visual.
There is one thing. Back about four years ago, or five years ago, whenever Comcast was doing it, Michelle was here. So at the front, we had a big screen put up and whatever she was videotaping was on that screen because all the people who sit in front of where they come up to speak to the mic can't see unless they turn around. So we were showing it so they could see it on the screen. Now, since cable, Area 58 took it over, for whatever reason, there's always a problem the night of the, at least the nights I was there. But I'd like to see that reinstated just because it's kind of courteous to the people who are in the first four or five rows.
But you, as the speaker in the audience, you're looking up at yourself speaking, right? I would think that, I wouldn't like that personally, but I'm aware of the rest of you folks, some of you speak fairly regularly at the meeting.
What do you mean? If you're...
If I'm coming up to speak as a citizen now?
Yeah, but if Nate's sitting in the row in front of you, he can't see you unless he turns around.
I get that part.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm looking up that, like that flag would be me staring me in the face as I'm talking. I think it would throw me off.
Did they have it on the side somewhat?
Yes.
Like at the exit doors to the parking lot?
Oh, it wasn't staring in front of you?
No, 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 it was way down the end, at the end of the Finance Committee's table.
Kitty corner.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
I see, I misunderstood what you were...
Yeah, I was picturing looking at myself talking and I'd be flustered.
Some people would like that.
Some people might. I'm not one of them.
So if you could ask Area 58 whether they can do that, I don't know what the problem is. Comcast could.
We have at least one PowerPoint to project from Alan.
Correct.
Still have that.
So that'll be on the other system?
The one system.
You know, there's a, Peter Venito has the...
It's like the pull-down screen.
Yeah, he's got a button, the screen comes down, but then he puts it in from his, the presentation in, it's like that tower that they've got over there.
Okay.
I don't know where it goes in the tower, but...
So those won't conflict, obviously?
It shouldn't.
Okay.
Shouldn't. Because the people who are video recording should be able to video record his presentation at the same time. I don't know, maybe, John, you can ask about having a separate screen?
I'll put it on the other card because I scheduled the meeting to be filmed with Area 58, two with Rich Goulart, Chris and Dillon.
Okay.
And Tricia used it like off to the side, right? A small screen off to the side?
It wasn't small, it was like a projection screen, not big, but it was a stand-up sort of...
Yeah, it was a big screen.
And it was in the corner, so it didn't interfere with the head table?
Right.
Or the screen that comes down in the middle of the stage?
I remember that, yeah, okay, yes. Okay.
So on another note, technically, we don't have to post a Board of Selectmen meeting for annual town meeting, but we usually post a meeting for 6:30 in case something came up as a last minute. So can we?
Guess we're good to go.
Excellent.
Seems too easy. Now God would.
Runs itself, right?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
See you next week?
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Start without me if I'm not there?
Buddy, 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 Brian. You can swear in Barry as an assistant.
Yeah.
Okay, we want to move on?
Move on, let's do it.
Warrants paid, we're getting warrants paid.
The warrant's paid.
Okay, the warrant's paid in total of $4,732.85, of which KP-LAR is $3,442. Columbia Gas is $1,087. And the rest is utilities.
Yes, and I would recommend in open session, taking a formal vote on this.
Do you have the draft announcement too?
Yes.
Would you like to read that?
So you want to start with that?
I think so.
Okay.
So people are aware, permitted release to the, from the Plimpton Police Department. At a public meeting held on May 6, 2019, the Plimpton Board of Selectmen voted to name Mr. Matthew Clancy as the interim police chief effective August 1, 2019. Mr. Clancy will be managing the Plimpton Police Department upon the retirement of Chief Patrick Dillon at the end of July 2019. Mr. Clancy is currently serving as the police chief in Duxbury, Mass., and he will be retiring from there effective June 14, 2019. Mr. Clancy is very familiar with the town of Plimpton and the Plimpton Police Department as a resident. Mr. Clancy is very familiar with the Town of Plimpton and the Plimpton Police Department as prior to serving the Town of Duxbury for the past eight years. Mr. Clancy was the Plimpton Police Chief from December 2002 to April 2010. So we'll be welcoming Mr. Clancy, Chief Clancy, and looking forward to it. They'll, a broader announcement will be in the Halifax Express and posted on the town website. And we thank Mr. Dylan, Chief Dylan, for his service. Did a good job.
So do you wanna make a motion to ratify that vote that we made in executive session?
Yes, I will make a motion that we ratify the executive session vote to appoint Mr. Matthew Clancy as interim Police Department Chief upon the retirement of Pat Dilling.
And I'll second that motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a memorandum of agreement here for us to sign.
And your meeting was tomorrow with the?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So there is a follow-up meeting Wednesday, internal with the, uh... With some of the Police Department.
Correct.
Employees, which is good, so looking forward to this. Next up, the ambulance.
So we'd actually like to put a hold on that until our May 20 meeting. We're just finalizing a draft agreement. We had a few questions on some items in there, so I just wanna make sure that it's in proper format before we sign.
Great. How about the Town of Kingston Emergency Animal Shelter?
So I have that here if the board...
Do we have any sort of an announcement on that one, Liz?
Not yet, because technically, we need Kingston to sign off as well.
Okay. Do you wanna say a few words?
Well, I'm thrilled we're doing this. We've been trying for a long time to kind of formalize a relationship with someone as far as an animal shelter, and, um, we have this now with Kingston. I think through the good work of Liz and our new animal control officer, just thrilled it's happening. And this is another one of those cooperative agreements between towns that just is totally mutually supportive and totally makes sense. So thrilled it's happening and is a really good additional service. So I make a motion that we sign the contract for emergency animal shelter services between the Town of Plimpton and the Town of Kingston.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Well-needed.
There we go.
Where are we on the SOLO bylaw update?
I think I hit that. So the Planning Board met last week as a continuation of their public hearing. And after quite a bit of discussion, the decision was made to recommend to pass over the SOLO bylaw on annual town meeting. In general, the reason for that was that it just felt like there was more work to do on these, really wanted to get it right. What came out of that meeting is it turned out the people sitting in the room, many of them would have, would be the exact right people to form a SOLO bylaw committee, and that's what happened. The committee will be chaired by John Schmidt, the new member of Planning Board, and then there are members from Planning Board, Open Space, Concom, Board of Selectmen, and the Bylaw Review Committee. They're having their first meeting right now, actually, and as soon as we're done here, I'll scoot over to that. The goal is, or some sense of urgency, and the goal is that the expectation that they might well need to be and ought to be an annual, or forgive me, a special town meeting late in the summer, probably the fall, both for this and maybe other things that come up.
Do we have a cranberry person represent?
A...
So a grower?
Brian is gonna be part of the committee.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And we heard the first public hearing, two of the major cranberry growers were there, had a whole bunch to say, and were well-heard and were passionate and, and I think pretty persuasive. And what came out of that first meeting, or what I heard, is some kind of middle ground that could both protect growers and other landowners and at the same time protect the town. And I think that's part of the reason to pass over, to get a better bylaw, but to find one that can equally protect all parties. So I think, hopefully, that's the goal of that committee. It's gonna be some hard work, but well worth getting going.
I just wanna make sure their voice is heard.
Oh, and they were heard, and I don't think those guys are gonna have any problem being heard along the way.
Good, great.
Okay. Did they form the committee, or they're going to form it?
It is formed. It's sort of a subcommittee or a task force, really.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be...
Not an actual border commission appointment.
Okay. Great, great.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes us through board goals. We wanna run down through these, or...
Should we save them next time when we reorganize at next meeting and we're all here?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'd like to put on the parking lot on next time.
Okay.
Oh, that'd be a good time for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Add parking lot?
Yeah.
For May 20, yes.
Yay, my parking lot is arisen. Re-arisen.
Town administrator updates.
So we had our first operations and preparedness meeting back on April 23, and that went very well. It was good to have some communication and just open up a dialogue with some of the different department heads so that all kind of know what's going on with respect to one another's departments and how we can better kind of work together to further our goals for the town moving forward. So I felt like that was a success. I've been getting a little bit of feedback from some of the people who attended the meeting. It's kind of trickling in, and everybody seemed to think that it was beneficial and worthwhile. I believe that from the public safety end, that they're hoping that as we come into the summer months, that maybe we could do, have the topic be a little bit more geared toward emergency management, say in the event we got a tropical storm or hurricane, something kind of wind-related. And then they were saying that maybe before winter sets in, like in the fall, we could do something similar but more for winter storms, to make sure that we have a plan in place for the Council on Aging and any possible shelters and that sort of thing. So I think it'll be an effective group.
I would like to see, I agree with everything you've said. I would like to see, though, a set date, so like it's the third Tuesday at 10 o'clock or whatever, so that people can put in the calendar for the whole year. And Mike, I think we were gonna trade back and forth.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I'm glad to do that.
So I went to the first one, you know.
I'm up.
You're up.
Okay.
Once we get a date. Okay.
And otherwise, it's been, it's been fairly busy as far as some different grant initiatives and everything that we've been working on. A lot of different applications have been filed. I had mentioned last time the municipal vulnerability preparedness. But in addition to that, we had filed originally earlier in April for the Federal Hazard Mitigation Planning Assistance Grant, and since then, we had to submit some additional information for that. So that just went off a few days ago, and I'm hopeful that we get something in that regard. The Highway Superintendent has an application in under the state's Small Bridge Program, and so we're waiting to hear on that. And I'm also going to be seeing if there's any Mass Works funding available to take another look at the Ring Road, Main Street intersection, because that seems like it comes up in conversation from time to time. And maybe if we bring somebody in and can qualify for grant funding, we can really take a look at that and get some different alternatives, so it's not just, this is how it has to look, or you do nothing. I'm sure that there's something in between.
We're gonna have to patch it if we don't get moving on it, because that road is starting to crumble. It's really getting bad, and that's where everybody goes to school.
And we have, the fire chief has been busy working on some different grant initiatives as well, so we're hoping for more good news out of that department. Elise Lyons has been busy with some other things, but she's still, she's still really been putting in some significant time, and that's proven itself to be worthwhile.
We need to sit down with Joy Marble on the Council on Aging for the van grant?
Yes, she told me she was doing the pre-application for it.
I'd like to know what kind of van she's looking at, because there's either three or four that they, you know, that are set. So if you pick from the menu, you can pick those, and they're automatically, at least in the queue. Now, I'm not sure what she's thinking of. One is a van like they have now, but it sits, I think, two wheelchairs in there?
Oh, okay. That would be good.
The next one is like the Gatrep buses that run around Plymouth, maybe not quite as big, but it's, you know, you could put probably four wheelchairs. So I'm not sure which one she's thinking of, and I think we ought to make sure we're all on board.
Okay, we can do that. And also, I had to file some supplemental information for this year's Green Communities application, and I'm hopeful that we get the new appliances from it. I think that that would be beneficial for the Council on Aging, just with all the operations there running out of the little kitchen down here.
So they would do what? Give us a kitchen?
They would give us a new refrigerator. It was to replace the refrigerators that are up in the portion that the police station's using, and this one in the kitchen here, and then over at the fire station for that, and a new stove oven combination.
Put one in for the old townhouse?
Well, we could transfer, we can look and see what we get, if any, and then the appliances that we have now, we might be able to declare some as surplus, or if there's one that's in decent working order, we could transition that to the old townhouse. And kind of transfer everything around.
Okay.
So for correspondence, we have a letter here from the Conservation Commission. They are recommending that Caitlin Nova be appointed to fill an empty seat on the commission effective immediately, I believe, since there's a vacancy.
Great. She's wonderful.
She is.
So do we have to act on this?
Yes, you would need to take a vote to appoint her, effective now, and I'm assuming...
Because 6:30?
Effective...
Through June 30.
Through June 30.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Caitlin Nova to the Conservation Commission for a term running through June 30, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what do we, do we need something to sign, or...
I'll have it ready for you.
We will get it ready.
Just as long as they can meet that.
Then we have...
She walked, when we did the sun tower, walked. She was really, she was very knowledgeable.
And she was great with the earth and gravel removal. Incredibly knowledgeable.
She's, she's, that's gonna be a great, great addition to the committee.
We have an application here for the use of town property from Plimpton Athletic Youth Sports Association. They wanna use the parking lot on June 1, and then they have a rain date of June 7. It does say that food will be served and that there will be some decorations out.
Is that a...
It's the parking lot.
Is that a Sunday?
Out here.
I think it's movie night, isn't it? Movie night, right?
Yeah, is that a Friday?
It's a Friday, the movie night, what they do up on the field.
It's a Friday.
They really use the field. They'd have to park here.
Right.
So it's... And I thought it should be all done, right?
So I make a motion, we approve this pending approval of the other officials that need to approve.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll let you sign.
Great. Now, look, I'm gonna go to this one. Do you know what they're showing?
You don't even know what they're showing?
I think last time it was ET, wasn't it? Bring your popcorn.
We have a letter here from the Board of Health advising us of septic system best practices, and they are requesting that we put signage up in the restrooms advising people of unflushable materials.
It's a good idea.
So we will come up with something and post it as such.
Do we need to vote on that, or just give our blessing?
I think just acknowledgement is fine. We have a letter here from Old Colony Elder Services about reappointment of their board of director, the member from Plimpton, who is currently Christine Unia. Christine would like to continue in her role with them.
Yeah.
So I would imagine that Joy Marble would put something on her letterhead and let them know that, but if they need a follow-up from us, we could obviously prepare a letter.
I usually send the letter out, but I still get something from Joy to, from her to us.
Okay.
To accompany that.
Then we have a notification here from the Department of Agricultural Resources informing us that they have issued an industrial hemp grower license to Scott Sawchuk for 53 Palmer Road and 127 Center Street in Plimpton. And he will be bound by all of their applicable regulations, including properly signing the crops if he were to pursue it. It's my understanding that he might not be pursuing it now, based on what I read in the newspaper, but nonetheless, he does have the permit in place, so we've been notified.
Is there a time limit on it, Liz, or does it go just perpetual?
I don't know if there's a timeframe on it. This is simply a notification for us. It's not the actual permit itself. So I'm not certain of that. We have a notification here for an event that's being sponsored by the Plimpton Fire Association. It's Chiefs Night 2019. It's a dinner and comedy show, open to the public on Saturday, May 4. Tickets are $30, and you can contact...
Are you?
The fire department. Oh, it is. Oops. Sorry. The time's just going by so fast.
I just wrote it down, too, like it was nothing.
Hope it was a good turnout. I have another event here, though, that I am on the right page in the calendar. Wednesday, May 22, is the annual Spring Fling presented by Plimpton and Carver. It's triad. It's the Council on Aging, the regional association, and that's at the Upland Club. I went last year. It was a nice time. It's a little luncheon event, and they give some awards and have a raffle. It was really nice.
I might go, too. You going again?
Um, I, I could. I could plan on, on going. Last year, I went with Chief Dylan.
Let's check. At least one of us should go.
Yeah, I think so. It was a very nice event. And it supports a good cause.
Do you want me to RSVP for you once to find out, or...
Yeah.
I could potentially go if you can, but if you wanna go, please do.
I mean, it's only about an hour or so. It's just a luncheon, but it's a nice event, a good chance to see people.
Actually, I take it back. I, I can't go, so I'm gonna leave it to you guys.
I think I'm available. John, if you wanted to go, maybe we could go.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to go.
Okay.
I don't know if, uh...
I'll do it. I'll pretend we've kinda...
Okay.
Throw it in there.
Okay.
It's not like you have assigned seating, and there's a...
No, and you can buy your ticket at the door, so last year, it was kind of just last minute.
How much are the tickets?
$12. No, I lied. $8.
She was trying to get her discounted, John.
$8 for seniors. See, she should pay $12.
Well, it's a, it's a... And then we have the Plimpton Halifax Express. The Silver Lake Drama Club won several awards through the Mass Educational Theater Guild at a very large festival that involves over 112 schools across the state. So they're doing some great work.
Did you ever go to a play at Biff? They are amazing. So good.
I saw Les Mis. It was amazing. The... I saw Les Mis, it was amazing, the, have you seen it, Mike? They have?
It is such a great job.
It's my favorite play, and I've seen it about five times, and I've seen it like at the Wang Center, and, you know, professionally. There was a senior in there that plays one part, that he was the best I've ever seen.
Wow.
And this is a senior in high school, he was phenomenal.
They do a great job.
Okay, so, do we want to save minutes for when Christine's here?
Um, we need them.
We need them.
Because somebody has asked in the...
Which one do they want?
I'm not sure, but I can go and ask very quickly.
Well, they can, we could always release the draft and mark them...
One of them is so short that it's...
We could release a draft and mark them as draft if they haven't been approved yet.
Yeah, I actually, other than a couple of typos, I didn't have any problems anyway, so...
I didn't either.
Releasing the drafts is okay, I think maybe it's better to have Christine here, but I think...
To formally approve.
But we absolutely, positively have to catch up on this.
We do.
Honestly, we're not a good example for other committees right now.
I agree, I agree.
Okay.
Well, we've got 311 and 325, and 48, I guess I saw 48, right?
That's the short and brief, that there's not much to it.
And 422 was the one you sent out today?
422, yes.
422 is mine.
Okay, well, I saw yours.
48 was the one that came today.
I didn't have any problem with any of them, so we can just wait and...
So if we clearly label them as draft...
You just have to clearly mark them as draft, and we'll save them in PDF format.
They're just typos?
Uh, we, we just want, no, there's no typo, it's just we want Christine to be... But you can use the watermark, draft.
Yes, and save it in PDF, and then we'll have to let them know that it's in draft format and subject to further revision.
Okay. So, unless we have any more business, any raves?
Well, what about rants?
I did a, did I do a rant, no?
No rants?
That's what I said, you got rant a rave?
No, so my rave is kind of looking forward to town meeting being passed, election being passed, and really, end of the year things being out of the way, actually really looking forward to summer when it's, all that slows down, and we get to work proactively on favored projects, so my rave is the coming of summer and kind of a different pace of the work we do, not less work, but just different pace and different work.
Certainly not less work, we got a lot of projects going.
Yeah.
I'm going to rave for the Alan Wheelock and his committee again, because that is going to be the highlight of town meeting. They have, I know this codification issue has come up, and that's going to be one we'll have to work through, but I hate to pile more on them.
It's just really not applicable to their mission at all, it would take up too much of their time, it's really, other than having the word "bylaw" in the title, there's really no, so...
Well, they've done stellar work, and I think, I'm hopeful that it'll all go through at town meeting, and we'll be off and running again. So, unless there's any further, I would make a motion that we close the May 6 Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Night.
Let's go, Bruce.
Thank you, John.